All right, as the mayor of the city of Stanton, I call the November tenth, two thousand and twenty-two work session. Stanton City Council meeting to order. The first item. November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, I received a request from councillor Dole to participate remotely in the November tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Stanton City Council meeting due to a temporary medical condition that prevents her physical attendance at the meeting. I will now entertain a motion to allow councillor Dole's remote participation in the meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three.
I move to allow councillor councillor Dole to remotely participate in the meeting due to a temporary medical condition.
We have a motion on the floor by councillor Brenda Mead. Is there a second? Vice Mayor Robertson is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, I'll now ask councillor Dole to state the remote location from which she is participating.
One thousand three East Beverly Street, Stanton.
All right, could everyone on council as well as the audience here, councillor Dole?
Yes.
Thank you, welcome. Right. The next item is a consideration of work session and regular meeting agendas. I'll entertain a motion. Councillor Steve Claffey?
I'm moved to approve the work session agenda and regular meeting agenda as presented.
All right, we have a motion on.
Apologies, Mayor Oaks. Well, first, I guess, I guess there should be a second.
Is there a second? I'll second it.
If we may, Rodney Rhodes is here, and I think he has an update on an item that's on your regular meeting agenda.
Okay.
At about three o'clock today, I received a phone call from Scott Goldenberg. He was, who is appealing the decision on Historic Preservation Commission. And he requested that his item, which I believe is item F, be tabled and be considered by council at your December eighth meeting. His architect was, flight was delayed getting back into the area.
Thank you. Shouldn't we vote on that during the regular meeting when we come to that item to table it?
You can't. You can't, or you can amend your agenda.
I move to approve the work session and regular meeting agenda with the following amendment, the removal of item F on the regular meeting.
To be tabled until the December.
December.
December tenth, December eighth.
There's a motion on floor by councillor Claffey. Vice Mayor Robertson is second. Any further discussion?
This is Carolyn Dole. I just need a point of clarification. Do we have a quorum? Do we have a quorum?
We do.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So, so you can count me as part of the quorum?
Yes.
Yes, and we have a quorum without you as well.
Yeah, there's four of us here in person. With, without you, you make five.
Okay. All right, I missed the four. I don't know how.
No problem. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Mr. Dole?
No.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
No.
Motion carries.
So we voted on the movement. Now we need to vote. We're done?
Well, that was a motion for the agenda.
That's right. He altered it. Gotcha. That's right, because he altered it. All right. All righty then, the next item is a motion for a closed meeting for one, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for use as a public animal shelter, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Two, consultation and discussion with legal counsel and among council members and city manager and staff regarding a regional agreement with the county of Augusta, Virginia. Three, consultation with legal counsel for necessary legal related advice and discussion regarding the order to show cause concerning the Stanton Juvenile Domestic Relations District Courts facilities.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion if we go into closed meetings stating the item just stated by the mayor.
As presented.
As presented.
There's a motion on the floors there. Second.
Second.
We have a second by councillor Claffey. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion to go back into open session.
Madam Mayor.
Councillor Claffey?
I move the council reconvene in an open meeting and certify of the best of each member's knowledge that only lawfully exempted public business matters were discussed, and that only public business matters as identified in a closed meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
There's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? I'll check. Vice Mayor Robertson has second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, that takes us into an open work session meeting, and I will return the work session meeting, and we will come back at seven thirty for the regular Stanton City Council meeting in the chambers. As mayor of the city of Stanton, I call the November tenth, two thousand and twenty-two Stanton City Council regular meeting to order. And the first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would like to join me, please do.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item is the invocation moment of silence, and tonight it will be councillor Claffey's turn.
Please bow your head in prayer. Heavenly Father, here in America, November is traditionally acknowledged as our month of Thanksgiving. This year, we have much to be grateful for. Once again, our democracy has allowed our citizens to exercise their right to peacefully vote. We now ask your blessings on all participants, both voters and candidates, to accept and support the will of the people, and never to condone mistrust or violence in our electoral process. We also pray that you will watch over all the citizens of Stanton. We are grateful to be able to live in this wonderful city, and we hope we can share our blessings with those less fortunate during this upcoming holiday season. We thank you for our abundance. Amen.
All right, so I wanted to let everyone know, if you're here this evening, this evening for item number F, that's the appeal of Historic Preservation Commission denial of a certificate of appropriateness for one twenty Church Street, the Newtown Historic District. That has been taken off of the agenda, so that has been tabled. So if you're here for that item, that's the only reason why you're here. You can, more than welcome to stay, but if you would like to go ahead and leave, I just wanted to let you know that that item is no longer on the agenda. So, all right, the mayor's report. The first thing under the mayor's report, we have Sidney Williams. She's with the Fishersville Remote Area Medical Clinic, also known as RAM. And I've advised Ms. Wilson, excuse me, Williams, that's my maiden name, I should know that, that she could have two minutes to let the community know about the Rams program.
Yes, thank you for the introduction, Mayor Oaks. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all this evening. As you said, my name is Sidney Williamson. I am the community host group co-lead for the Fishersville Ram Clinic coming up on November nineteenth and twentieth for the setup day on the eighteenth. And so during that weekend, we will be at the Augusta Expo Center, right in your backyards. We hope that you all will be able to support us in this endeavor. If you don't know what Remote Area Medical is, it is a nonprofit organization that provides free medical, dental, and vision care to those in need, particularly uninsured and underinsured individuals in remote and rural areas. At our Fishersville Clinic, we are hoping to provide just that, medical, dental, and vision care, as well as several other different specialty services, including women's health, endocrinology, podiatry, pediatrics, and dermatology. Dermatology is only on Saturday, though. I want to make that caveat. So we also will be working closely with the Central Shenandoah Health District to provide vaccines, including TDA, flu, COVID, hep A. And I think that covers it all. So that does include the bivalent Moderna vaccination, so that we can try to get as many of those bivalent boosters out. Additionally, we will have A1C testing and rapid rebuff training. So we are hoping that this will be a clinic that can help any person in the Stanton and Central Shenandoah region with whatever healthcare needs that they need. If you have any questions, you're welcome to reach out to me, sidneywilliams@fishersville.ram.clinic@gmail.com. But I do believe that we have a section for questions at the end of this discussion. So thank you again to the central, to all of you for having me. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. And I think that is all that I have to cover. So if you have any questions for me.
Oh, you did a great job keeping it to two minutes.
I was trying to be very respectful, so.
Are there any questions for Ms. Williams?
I just thank you for doing it. I mean, it's really, a lot of people really need this.
Yes, we're excited to bring Rams to the area. We have pop-up clinics throughout the nation, so we're very excited to have it here.
Right, so again, that's the Fishersville Remote Area Medical Clinic. And can you give the date one more time?
November nineteenth and twentieth. And we do recommend that patients come as early as they can. Patients are allowed through the door at six AM, but we have had Ram clinics where patients are lining up at midnight the night before. So, yes, it is very much a high-end demand, you know, way of accessing healthcare.
Remote clinic, I'm sorry, where is that at?
It is at the Augusta Expo Center, so right off of exit ninety-one.
Yeah, because since Augusta doesn't do the free clinic anymore, I think they have the dental clinic, but they don't do the free clinic, which was a big asset to some of our, you know, people that needed that. So thank you.
Absolutely. And we are working with Augusta Health as well, very, very closely. So we're getting a lot of advice from them.
Wonderful. Well, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
All right. Next, under the mayor's report, I just wanted to advise that I attended a scout celebration. The Boy Scouts is now known as the Scouts, BSA. That was very delightful. They had an auction to try to raise money for your local scout troops throughout the Shenandoah Valley. This morning, I spoke with the governor's school students in the chambers, and Ms. Bow regard, you joined me, and that was really delightful, wasn't it?
Had a good time, I think.
I tell you, the governor's school kids, they are very intelligent. I wanted to let everyone know that the holiday tree lighting will be on November twenty-eighth at five thirty, and it's the big tree right next to the Gypsy Hill Park Swimming Pool. And this year, honoree that will be lighting up the tree is our very own Leslie Bow regard. And at seven o'clock, there will be the Christmas parade in downtown that is held by the SDDA. That's always a lot of fun. And then after that, just take a tour through the Gypsy Hill Park for the celebration of holiday lights. All of that will definitely put you in the holiday mood. The sparkle and sweets for downtown starts tomorrow from six to nine, and it's going to be rain or shine. So that should be delightful. I'd also like to take a moment to congratulate our newly elected council members-elect, Brad Arrowood and Alice Woods and Michelle Edwards. Yes, absolutely. Michelle Edwards was not able to make it, but I just wanted to say congratulations, and we look forward to working with both of you. So in fact, we already put you to work earlier. I'd like to take a moment to thank Ted Lawhorn, Yvonne Wilson, and Eric Kern for their willingness to serve the city. We appreciate the fact that they showed dedication and willing to give back to their community. And with that, I'd also like to congratulate for the school board Stephanie Mason, Fontella Brown Bundy, and Kristen Siegel. Congratulations to the three of them. The city council looks forward to working with the new members on school board and then the old timers as well. And I'd like to thank John Wilson and Lisa Blackburn Hatter for their willingness to serve the city. Let's see. Oh, yeah, one more thing. Right, this is on a personal note. I found out I'm going to be a grandmother, so I'm very excited. So, yeah. Something must be in the water. That's right. Councillor Claffey just became a granddaddy all over again.
For the third time.
But what's special about this one?
It was born on Election Day, and it's our first girl. So we have a seven, seven pound and ten ounce beautiful baby girl.
A lot of good things are happening. All right, are there any additional items by members of council?
Madam Mayor.
Councillor Claffey?
The nominations committee met on November second, two thousand and twenty-two, and would like to make the following motion. To appoint Clay Graham to the Economic Development Authority to fill the unexpired term of Butch Smalley, ending January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. To reappoint Debbie Irwin to the Joint IDA of the County of Stafford and the City of Stanton for a three-year term beginning November first, two thousand and twenty-two, and ending October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. And to reappoint Alex Avery to the Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term beginning November first, two thousand and twenty-two, and ending October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
All right, and that's in the form of a motion. Since it's coming from a committee, we do not need a second. So.
Mayor Oaks, I'd like to make an amending motion, please.
Okay.
I would like to separate the reappointments from the new appointment and vote on them separately.
Right. Mr. Blair, do we need to vote on voting on them separately, or can we just?
I, technically, yes, you would need a second to Ms. Mead's motion and then vote on the motion.
All right, so we have a motion.
You would have votes separately on the appointment and the reappointments if it passes.
All right, and we'll have councillor Claffey just read those out for us as we vote. All right, so there's a motion on the floor. There's a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey? Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
No.
Motion carries.
All right, so councillor Claffey, can you read off the first?
To appoint Clay Graham to the Economic Development Authority to fill the unexpired term of Butch Smalley, ending January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six.
Right, so that's coming from a committee, so we do not need a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
No.
Mr. Holmes?
No.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Dole?
No.
Motion fails.
All right, can you read the next commission and name?
To reappoint Debbie Irwin and to reappoint Alex Avery.
For?
For terms expiring in two thousand and twenty-five and between October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
In which boards or commission would this be?
Debbie Irwin for the Joint IDA of the County of Stafford and the City of Stanton for a three-year term beginning November first, two thousand and twenty-two, and ending October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. And to reappoint Alex Avery to the Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term beginning November first, two thousand and twenty-two, and ending October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
I think we'll need to first vote on the Stafford and Stanton.
Said reappointments.
Right, you can take them both.
Simply reappointments. Okay, all right, so these are new, these are new appointments, then.
These are reappointments.
Okay.
Reappoints, people already served.
All right, just a point of clarification. Ms. Mead, can you state your motion again?
My motion was to separate the appointment from the two reappointments.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so this is coming from a committee. We do not need a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Is that it, Mr. Claffey? We're done? All righty. Any additional items by other members of council?
Mayor Oaks? I'd like to continue where we left off at the last meeting when I got silenced by the hammer. And you said that, that the, these weren't, the, the, the women's rights issue and the gay marriage issue weren't part of our, what we're here for. But I would think that we're, anybody that votes, anybody that we represent, we should represent them across the board, not just, you know, I think that was more important than the, 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 the resolution about the moving the courthouse. I think it's a lot more important. I think we have a lot of gay citizens. I think we have a lot of women who are worried about their right to abortion or even healthcare. And, and I think it's really important that we, we should be supporting these people and not, and just not brushing it off, and just like, we don't have any control over it.
Okay, well, that would, the appropriate time to discuss that is when we come to it, and that is item number G. However, I do have to state that that's not exactly what I said. However, we can discuss this when we get to item G. Okay? All right, any additional items?
I have something. I, I'd just like to add my congratulations to all of those who ran for city council and school board, whether they, whether they were successful or not. All of the candidates ran positive campaigns. They stuck to the issues that concerned all Stanton citizens. There were no last-minute attack mailings. We saw limited last-minute political shenanigans. Almost without the exception, the candidates worked hard to build broad-based community support. There were no outside political action committees and only limited interference from non-Stan citizens and special interest groups. Two and a half years ago, COVID deterred all but one public forum during our campaign season. COVID denied those candidates who cared about the safety and health of their fellow citizens the opportunity to meet constituents directly. This year was different. I'd like to thank the community organizations that stepped up this year to give Stanton citizens multiple opportunities, nonpartisan opportunities to hear from all candidates. The Stanton Democratic Party, Stanton Equity Coalition, Stanton West End Business Association, Stewart Hall School, Mary Baldwin University, and Building Bridges for the Greater Good. These public forums had an important impact on voter turnout in this election. In the two thousand and twenty city council elections, the greatest number of votes cast for any one individual was twenty-five hundred and some change. And the top four vote winners had cumulative votes of just over nine thousand five hundred. In this year's city council election, the top vote getter received over four thousand six hundred votes for city council. And the three elected, the three that were elected had a cumulative thirteen thousand two hundred and five votes. And probably never before seen in Stanton, the top vote for school board was nearly five thousand, wait a minute, three hundred votes. A school board member. In the twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two elections, we've raised the bar for candidate integrity, voter engagement, and election turnout. Let's keep this momentum going for two thousand and twenty-four.
All right, are there any additional comments by members of council?
Yes, this is Carolyn Dole.
Councillor Dole?
I would like to just continue my conversation with citizens about how we lost our curbside recycling. Once again, you're still paying for that. You didn't see a reduction. You're still paying for curbside recycling, but you don't get it. So you only can avail yourself of recycling if you pay a private company to come and get yours, or if you have the means and the time and in the schedule and the physical ability to haul it to a remote site. So this has concerned me ever since we were kind of surprised with this sudden pilot program. Because for those who are elderly, disabled, who don't have a vehicle, who, whose work schedule doesn't allow them to ever get to the recycling facility, for, for a lot of reasons, this was thrown at our citizens with no input from the citizens. And, and I don't think it's fair, and I continue to, to think that we can do better than this. When we've looked at alternatives, all I'm hearing is, well, we need to find some land to acquire to build a permanent recycling. Well, that costs money, and it takes, it takes land off our tax rolls forever, because honestly, the city doesn't pay taxes to the city when we own the land. So we're hurting ourselves by doing that. Now, wonder why nobody's ever looked at the fact that do we need curbside recycling every week? We could have it twice a month, once a month. I personally don't ever fill up my bins in one week. I guess if I had a big party, maybe I could, but, but other than that, I don't. And also, the other interesting fact that people should be paying attention to is Governor Youngkin, yes, Governor Youngkin is promoting curbside recycling. He wants us to have it, and there's going to be grants available. So with all that happening, I think, I think the city should be looking long and hard in this upcoming budget to restore our curbside recycling, because there are ways to do it that we can afford, and, and it would be fair to our citizens. So I will be continuing to bring this up, because we have such a long history of recycling in this city. We were an early adopter, and it's a shame to lose a good thing that our citizens participated in without looking at alternatives. Thanks.
All right, Vice Mayor Robertson?
Yeah, the, one thing I debated whether even say this or not, but I started thinking about it, and I, I figured it was best as a health professional to put it out there. And, you know, the, the old saying goes, if you want privacy, don't go into politics. But I'm going to tell you. I have been having issues for the last ten or eleven months. Chest pain, shortness of breath occasionally. And I didn't say anything. And I should have probably, I did mention it one time to my doc, but he said, well, probably, you know, GERD or whatever. So it got a little worse, and finally, it started occurring with actually doing a little bit of strenuous work. So I mentioned that to him, and that got his attention. And so I had a stress test, and I actually did all right, but it did actually have some changes. So yesterday morning, early, I went to Augusta for a cardiac catheterization, and they just thought they were going to find something with maybe some medicine that could, you know, manage it. I'm sure you've probably heard of that wonderful term, there's a right and a left, and then there's the, the anterior descending, otherwise known as the widow maker. Mine was ninety-five percent blocked. So they put us in. And I'm doing all right. So I want to tell the men, the women, don't look past shortness of breath. Don't look past chest pain. Say. Don't look past chest pain. Say something. Get yourself checked. Okay? All right.
All right, thank you, and I'm glad to know that you're you're doing well. All right, with that, I'll accept a motion to approve the minutes for the work session and regular meeting of October 27, 2022.
Mayor Oaks.
Councilor Holmes.
I move to approve the work session, I mean, the regular meeting as a president.
Work session and regular.
Yes.
Minutes.
Minutes.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilor Brenda Mead has second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessiker, please call the roll.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. That takes us to our regular meeting, which is item A, a public hearing in consideration of a request by Calvary Baptist Church for a special use permit at 198 Garland Drive. Ms. Bowery Guard.
Rodney Rhodes, Senior Planner, will walk through the side of this evening.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Oaks, city council members. Calvary Baptist Church is requesting a special use permit at 198 Garland Drive to use an existing single family dwelling as a meeting place for the church youth. The property is zone R2, low density residential district, and church uses require a special use permit in that district. The church acquired the property back in 1994. However, they have used it for residential purposes since that time. I believe they have housed their pastors there over the past, you know, 28 years or so. However, now they would like to utilize that same building. It's it looks like a house. It is a house as for for youth meeting space. And this would primarily be on Sunday morning, Sunday evening, and Wednesday evening. All of the surrounding property is also zoned R2, low density residential district. And all the other surrounding uses are single family homes. Staff has conducted a review of the request and is generally supportive of the application. If the special use permit is approved, care should be taken to ensure the use does not negatively impact the surrounding residential uses. And towards that goal, staff has recommended some conditions if city council is to approve this. I would note that in accordance with Code of Virginia, adjoining property owners receive a letter from the city about this request. We receive no response from those letters from all to all adjoining property owners, including those across the street. The planning commission conducted a public hearing on October 20, 2022. No one spoke at the public hearing in opposition to this request. And at the conclusion of the public hearing, the planning commission, on a three to zero vote, recommended approval of special use permit with the conditions noted in the briefing. I'd be glad to take any questions you have now or after you conduct a public hearing. I understand that Pastor Andy Honeycutt is here to represent the church and to answer any questions council may have of him.
All right, are there any questions by council members for Mr. Rhodes? All right, and if the pastor, go ahead.
Rodney, the only thing, there's no, they'd be able to park at the church parking lot, right? So it wouldn't really be a parking issue or anything.
That's correct. And one of the proposed conditions is that no buses or vans or church vehicles would be parked on this lot. I mean, the church is right across the street.
Rodney, I have a question. The the information we have indicates there's a list of special use permits approved for the area. Were these all permits for this for this congregation, for this church?
That that is my understanding.
So in 2014, the yards of houses for overflow parking on five lots or residences were approved for overflow parking?
That is correct.
Okay. All right.
Any additional questions? All right, would the pastor care to address the council?
Hello, thank you, council, for considering this request. I'm Pastor Andy Honeycutt. I'm one of the associate pastors at the church. And all the conditions that are set in that request easily met. They are not burdensome whatsoever for us. It's going to look like a house contain continue to, for all intents and purposes, from the outside, just be a house. And indeed, there's a good question about the parking. It's right across the street. And that's never been a problem around there at all. So I'll take any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Pastor Honeycutt?
Yeah, so you're actually, your congregation is actually using just the yards of houses in the neighborhood? Or do you own those houses as well?
Oh, oh, boy, we own those houses.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're not parking in someone's backyard. Yeah, we own those houses. And it's only for a special event or just overflow parking on, say, a typical Sunday morning or something like that as needed.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want to say that I know y'all do a lot of good work with the people are poor and stuff, and I, you know, all of us appreciate it.
Praise the Lord. That's great. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Well, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to read the public hearing guidelines. In a moment, I will open up the public hearing. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a specific topic. We ask that you please give your name, your address, and then keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach the five minute time limit, I will let you know that your time limit has expired. For our Zoom participants, please raise your hand now if you wish to speak on this particular public hearing. If you raise your hand during this public hearing, you will also be able to raise your hand during this council meeting for other public hearings and matters of the public. And please keep your comments to five minutes as well. Once everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity, I will then close the public hearing. I will now open the public hearing. So if you wish to speak, please approach the podium. And we'll alternate between the individuals physically present and those that have their hands raised via the Zoom platform. So when I hit the gavel, you can come forward to speak to the council. And again, we'll alternate between folks physically here and the Zoom. And when I hit the gavel, that'll close the public hearing out. So with that, the public hearing is now open. You can speak for or against. All right, Mr. Kessiker, does anyone have their hands raised?
No, ma'am.
All right, anyone?
It's obvious that Mr. Fawcett is not here.
Exactly. All right. The public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Go here.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move the council adopt the resolution and approve the special use permit with the conditions as recommended by the planning commission.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Councilor Holmes is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessiker, please call the roll.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, the next item is item B, a consideration of request by Stanton Augusta Waynesboro Habitat for Humanity for the waiver of fees related to the construction of a home at 103 and 107 Fairview Avenue. Ms. Bowery Guard.
Jeff Johnson will walk us through this item this evening.
Welcome.
Evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Stanton Augusta Waynesboro Habitat for Humanity has submitted a request to have the fees related to construction of a single family home on a double lot at 103 and 107 Fairview Avenue. City code allows for these fees to be waived for nonprofit organizations that meet a long list of requirements. Staff has reviewed the request. Habitat for Humanity meets all those requirements and is recommending that the fees be waived. The fees and the fees included would be the water and sewer connection fees, water and sewer facility fees, and all building permit fees. And those are estimated to run about $15,700 in total.
Are there any questions?
This is one home on two lots.
One home on on two lots, yes.
All right, any additional questions? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Oaks.
Councilor Holmes.
I move the city council pursuant to Stanton City Code's sections 13.15.060, and 13 and 15.10.120, approve this waiver of the city imposed water and sewer connection fees, water and sewer facility fees, and building permit fees associating with the construction by Stanton Augusta Waynesboro Habitat for Humanity for single homes at 103 and 107 Fairfield Avenue.
Right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilor Brenda Mead is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessiker, please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, great. Glad to hear it for Habitat, so that's good for everyone. Mr. Arrowhead, I'm sure you would agree. All right, that takes us on to item C, an introduction of ordinance to amend the FY 2023 budget ordinance for the city of Stanton by adding budget amendment number three. Ms. Bowery Guard.
Jesse Myers, our Chief Financial Officer, is here tonight.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm introducing budget amendment number three for fiscal year 23, and it is a city only budget amendment. If the introduction is passed this evening, I will bring this amendment back to you December 8th for the consideration. This budget amendment does not require a public hearing. On this amendment, we are proposing two uses of the FY 22 carryover. The remaining carryover will be appear on budget amendment number four, which will, I'll bring to you in at the January meeting after the audit is complete and the financial statements have been presented. Budget amendment number three totals 744,407. The general fund portion is 677,135. 309, 459 is to fund the negative contingency that we have in the FY 23 budget. As you recall, this negative contingency line was placed in the budget to balance the FY 23 budget. This will erase that and bring the contingency to zero. The rest of this amendment relates to the employee bonus that we are proposing to give our employees in their December 16 paycheck. We're proposing $500 for our regular part time employees, $1,000 for our full time employees. Employees must be employed with the city as of November 13 to be considered eligible. The general fund portion of this bonus is 300,390, and 67,286 will be transferred from the general fund to the following funds for their share of the bonus. 17,225 for Blue Ridge Court Services, $1,077 for HUD, 3,230 for the parking fund, 24,761 for the water fund, $538 for the sewer fund, 18,302 for the environmental fund, and lastly, 2,153 for the stormwater fund. The city manager recommends the ordinance be introduced as presented.
Great. Are there any questions? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
Well, can I just, I just wanted to note that
Yes.
I I think it's important for us to recognize the hard work that our employees have done in particular in the last couple of years, and to note that this will be a tool for the city to stem the tide of turnover that we've experienced and to encourage folks to to continue their tenure with the city. And I'll just share with you a couple of numbers. In FY 19, employee turnover was 9%. It rose to 12% in FY 20, 13% in FY 21, and 18% in FY 22. So turnover is expensive. You train somebody for a job. It takes them three to six to, you know, sometimes longer months to learn the job and learn it well. If we can't retain one out of five essentially employees for longer than a year, then we are just continuing on a sort of a, what do you call it, when you put a gerbil on a wheel? You know, it's just a, it's just a continual process of hiring, training, losing, hiring, training. So I think this is a really important thing for us to do.
Did you want to make the motion?
Oh, absolutely. I'd love to make the motion. I'd like to move to introduce an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023 budget by adding budget amendment number three totaling 744,407.
There's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Councilor Holmes is second. Any further discussion? I would like to say that the bonuses are well deserved. Mr. Kessiker, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. Right, that takes us to item D, a presentation of Cordley Financial Report. Ms. Bowery Guard.
Jesse Myers will continue.
Welcome back.
This evening, I'm going to walk you through some of the highlights on the first quarter financials for FY 23. They're included in the packet. We are early in the fiscal year, so we certainly don't have enough data to determine how FY 23 will trend the rest of the year. I want to start by going through three of the major revenue sources. First up is sales tax. Sales tax receipts run on a two months lag. So we only have data for July and August. Both months combined are almost 123,000 higher than the same period last year. Two months does not make a trend, but it is encouraging what we're seeing so far in the first two months. Our meals tax is on a one month lag, so we have data for the first three months. July started off a little sluggish, but overall, the first three months are up approximately $40,000 compared to the same time period last year. Net lodging tax is also on a one month lag, similar to meals tax. And just like meals tax, July started off a little sluggish, but over the first three months, they're up almost 21,000 compared to the same time period last year. Next, I'll walk you through a few of the expense numbers on the quarterly report. I'm not going to read every single one of them. Just hit a few of the highlights that you need to know about. Through September, we should be trending at a percentage of approximately 25% since that's the first quarter of the year. The general government section is currently sitting at 31% at the end of September, since we have a few of our expenditures that we encumber for the entire year. In particular, the property insurance. So in the encumbrance number, there's an entire year's worth of insurance. And there are a few examples of that. Judicial, public safety, and public works are trending right where they should, we expect them to be. Parks and Recreation is running high, and as you can see there on the Horticar Culture line is the July storm cleanup cost. The storm cleanup cost is approximately $625,000, of which about 152,000 has been reimbursed or will be reimbursed through the insurance company. We are working with the Virginia Department of Emergency Management in hopes that we can get assistance on the remaining amount, but currently, we are still awaiting their decision. And lastly, I've included the Gulf Financial Report with figures updated through October. Expenses are running about 23% of budget through October, and revenues are 37% of budget. So revenues are outpacing expenses, which is good to see. Like I said before, we're early in the fiscal year, so we don't have a lot of data to work with. But I, what I am seeing is encouraging so far. Have any questions? You can let me know.
Are there any questions?
Thank God for tourists.
Why do you think July was slow?
I honestly do not know. I was kind of surprised to see July was low in the meals and the lodging, both.
First part of July is always slow. It's the biggest, I think, the first two weeks of July are the biggest vacation time of the year, and most of most of our travelers come more towards August. So in my records, they've always been, the first two weeks have been kind of light. And we were closed for the whole week, and I think April 44 was, and maybe somebody else.
Did the storm?
We had a big storm, yeah.
Not that I'm aware of that would affect those two items.
Any additional questions or comments?
Thanks for this.
I just wanted to let you guys know, I planned to change up the report a little bit because I've, I knew that you had mentioned that you'd like to see year to year comparisons, and I plan to work that in as soon as I get time to redesign it a little bit. and I plan to work that in as soon as I get time to redesign it a little bit.
Be great. Thank you for this. This is great.
Thank you. All righty. That takes us on to item E, report on Gypsy Hill Golf Course Point of Sale System. Lightspeed. Ms. Berygard.
James Corbett is here from Parks and Recreation, and he's gonna, uh, present, um, his information, and I believe you have a PowerPoint in front of you.
I have a fleet of slides to accommodate.
So I think you also have hard copies as well, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, for having me this evening. I see some of you have some hard copies of these slides, and if you would, I'd like to go through the presentation. If you have any questions afterwards, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Um, hopefully, I will fill in most of the blanks as we go along, but my purpose here tonight is to give you an update of the Gypsy Hill Golf Course Point of Sale System, which is our Lightspeed Golf Point of Sale System. And I'll jump right into it and kind of give you, uh, an idea of what we consider some of the important benefits that we get out of the system in our department. Number one, customer service. Number two, daily play management. Number three is the data capture. And as we walk you through these slides, we'll kind of transition from, from one to the other. Our first slide here, which was a massive improvement for us, is our landing page that we have at the city of Stanton, and also, you can find this by going to gypsyhigolf.com, and it'll route you back here, but one of the benefits that we have is someone's looking for information for our course, they can go here, and if they want to book a tee time, that widget in the bottom right corner, uh, gives anyone the availability to book a tee time twenty-four hours a day. And that's a massive improvement, and also takes a lot of pressure off frontline staff in the pro shop from answering the phone and trying to help customers in front of them. And as our customers get more accustomed to using this method, it will make it even easier and increase our efficiency in the shop. So basically, if you was to click on that widget, you would come to a page that looks like this. Uh, I've obviously been there before, so it knows who I am when I clicked on here, but if it was your first time there, it would ask you some basic information like your full name, and it requires at least an email address, because once you make tee times from this point forward using this format, you'll get email confirmation, and you'll be able to actually communicate with the golf course. Uh, so this is something you would look at. I pulled this up from earlier this week. Uh, carts are doing at six fifteen. We're, we have the ability, if you go here, to leave messages to the customers, kind of give them a heads up what the conditions are. We could have a condition on there, there was cart path only, anything like that, or if we had a tournament going on, and you're, you're able to select how many holes you'd like to play, who all is playing, and how many people you have in your group. Uh, once you would fill that out and send that out over the internet, it comes and populates our T sheet here, and which you have a view here, and basically, the system only has, uh, available what tee times are available on the customer end, and it fills them in our, our end. And basically, once you fill out a customer profile, it will put you in as a color-coded customer here. I tried to pick one that had various colors on different types of players that we have. The green you see are all public players, people who are non-members. The red are members. Uh, the one blue, uh, darker blue that you see up there is an all-inclusive member, which is a little different type of membership. And I put a light blue, uh, staff member in there just to show you. You know, it's kind of, we can take a, we can take a snapshot, look at this, and see who's coming to our course for the day, and it's a good way for us to transition into some data that I'll get into here a little bit farther. Um, I want to say, once you fill that out, you'll go into this color-coded customer list. Um, as you can tell, our members have a little bit more detailed information. They have a, a member number they're required to fill out, uh, full application, uh, when they become a member of our course. Uh, I tried to pick a sheet here that had some, some red, some green, some blue on it for you, just to give you an idea what it looks like. Uh, on this, we are actually, our customer list is, right now, I just checked, is about two thousand three hundred and fifty, and when you, we have a slide later on that shows that we can pull up just that number. And each one of these folks, if you wanted to find out some more detailed information, you could click on them and get a little bit more, uh, information that they have provided on their profile. This is what it looks like if you just walk into the pro shop on our Lightspeed system. This is, uh, for speed and convenience. Uh, we don't ask for a full profile, it doesn't, it's not customer-friendly to do it at that particular time, especially if you have a line of ten or twelve people on a busy Saturday afternoon. But basically, it's gonna, if you're gonna rent a cart from us, we at least need your first and last name and a phone number. We try to get, uh, additional information with the email to help us down the line with some marketing for the course, but this is actually what our staff sees if you walk in, and this is what require, is required of you as a customer. Where it says public there, where it's green that you're looking at, that's a drop-down menu. If you click on that, you can, you can choose whether if they're a junior member or, or a regular member, an all-inclusive member, and it'll, it'll put them in the appropriate categories. You only have to do this the first time you come see us. Uh, after you come see us after that, uh, any information you give us when you come to check in, if you're a member, you just give us your member number, we put it in auto-fill, and if we start typing in your last name or a phone number, you'll have drop-down menus that we'll be able to select you much quicker, which once again, results in more efficiency at the front desk. This is a more detailed profile. I just pulled up my name. Um, asked for some additional information like street address, uh, zip code. We had that custom field put down specifically. At the bottom, you'll see there, city resident, yes or no. Uh, we try to encourage everyone to fill out a full profile, especially if they're booking tee times with us online, but this is required of all of our membership. And somewhere down the line, I'd love to be able to add, especially for all of our members, a photo, uh, that goes there. There's particular spots there where if you pulled up someone's profile, it'd have a photo of them, and every time they check in, actually, the photo would, would pop up every time they came to your cash register. Moving on, reverting over back to the T sheet, we're going to go to the next phase of, of the system, how it benefits us, which is daily play management. Now, we're going back to the T sheet that populates when you, when you either enter a tee, uh, tee time, either in person or online, and some of the advantages that, uh, benefits our staff from having the system. If you look up to the top right, uh, you will see, I don't know, see, I have a pointer here. Uh, if I go to this little wrench up here, and I would click on that, on the system, it allows me, say, for example, if we have a frost delay coming up in the morning, which is pretty typical this time of year, I can click on that, move everybody's tee time an hour, two hours, and everybody on that T sheet will get an automatic notification. Either how they've, um, put in their information with us, whether it be an email, a text message, whatever, that's another great way that I can communicate, uh, and the staff can communicate with anyone that's on the golf course if we get a lightning notification in the summertime, or heavy rains coming, we can notify everybody instantly with a text message on the golf course. Danger is coming, please vacate the golf course. Uh, it's a good tool for that, or if we have any special conditions that come about, uh, that days. Excellent feature of this. So another ability we have with this is we can block off whatever tee times we need for tournaments, and it basically, it will explain to the customer, if they try to go on, what's happening that day, um, why the particular tee times are going on. We can put a message at the, at the board, at the top banner, that every customer will see if they go online. Another advantage, if you're a member of our golf club and you want to go on here, you can see when other members are playing, and you might know some of them, and you might want to pair up with them. And it's an option where members can turn on and off that feature individually. If they don't want to be seen, they don't have to be. Uh, as you can tell, on the left-hand side, we're close to the, the times where they play. These prices here are set in here. Uh, and based on whatever profile you fill out, it will charge you appropriately when you check on, uh, customer's name, so it can't be manipulated. Only management can change these prices, and if you come to check in, you, if you're going to be a member who comes there and play and you need a cart, it's going to be, you won't be charged green fees if you're public player, it's going to include the green fees, or if you're one of these people that are highlighted in yellow, which is a VSGA card member, you get a five-dollar discount. And they're able to use that four times in a year if they participate in the VSGA program. So that's kind of what those color codes mean for those people. The all-inclusive member down here in the dark blue, uh, they don't incur any fees for a cart fee or, uh, greens fee. They have paid for that all up front in advance. Another beauty about this T sheet before I move on is, um, if we happen to have a rain event and we issue rain checks, we can do them as a group, and it will go into each one of these person, people's personal profile automatically. Um, if we have it and they don't have to keep it with a piece of paper, the next time they come and check in with us, they'll have a credit that'll show up for them, where they're able to use it, and it automatically be applied. So that's a benefit for us, and we're actually able to get more granular and go in and check out how many rain checks we've issued, how many have been redeemed, and get a percentage of that as well. All important information, uh, for us. Moving on to more important data, uh, regarding for us is the auditing. Um, I think it's real important to have checks and balances in place. Uh, this allows this particular information to be pulled up by management. Uh, our people in our department can pull it up. People in finance have the capability to pull it up if they need to. We can check on progress. I actually can get a breakdown. Let me take off these particular glasses, so if you look here, this is, the pie graphs kind of give you an indication of this particular timeframe, which was August the fourteenth of this year through September the fourteenth. I wanted to pull up a month's worth of time right after this, after we reopened after the storm, just to kind of give you an idea of most likely that something close to what the revenue we lost for being closed for that month is probably somewhere between thirty and thirty-five thousand. This shows you this right here, thirty-two thousand nine twenty-nine is for that particular timeframe. Shows you how people booked their tee times. Twenty-three percent were online, seventy-seven percent were offline, which for us is only the pro shop, so that's why it's going to correlate with this number over here. It lets you know that, uh, ninety-one percent of our customers went through the, through the club's website to book, nine percent through Chrono Golf, which is actually Lightspeed's, uh, website, which people can go on there and find out golf information. So that's good to know that we're actually getting some customers funneled here from their website. Uh, let's let you know if people use the widget to book, if they use mobile phone to book their tee time. Down here on the, the bottom left, you'll see that eighty-nine percent of our customers for this timeframe played eighteen holes, eleven percent played nine. That's important for us when we start holding, uh, tee spots and pricing and things like that for us in the future for benchmarking. Fifty-eight percent of our customers were public, forty-two percent were members. So all this is valuable information. Tagged on here in the bottom, I kind of threw this on here that you can put in another time range. I believe this was through our year, our calendar year-to-date through the middle of September. It was nine thousand six hundred and sixty-seven rounds, played a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in revenue to that point, and it breaks down, this list goes massively on down, so you can look up, uh, public, public expenditures, how much they brought in revenue, adult members, junior members, uh, and so on. It gets in the VSGA, it goes on and on and on. Next, I'd like to talk about, um, some other valuable information, which is tee time occupancy rate. This is something we talked about, uh, when we proposed the business plan to council. We thought that would be vital for us, because then we can benchmark ourselves compared to other courses that use similar software, and we can benchmark ourselves on a year-to-year basis for improvement. As, as, pretty much you can typically, uh, guess, our busiest times are on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday, but this gives a little bit more in-depth look at to our busiest times of day, our not-so-busy times where we can do some additional marketing and coupon codes and things like that to build up revenue to fill up those tee times. Uh, Sunday is our busiest day, as you can tell by this bar graph that's up here, but believe it or not, our busiest time is during this timeframe on Friday. Um, so ten to twelve seems to be the, the hotspot for our golf course of doing the most revenue. The next slide actually goes on down to show you what's below this, that interprets that data above, which is actually the percentages that will give you for tee time utilization rate and occupancy rate. So as you can tell, that Friday time slot over here, it's giving you thirty-six point nine percent, our worst time of the golf course. Our least busiest is Monday, right here, from two to four, so that would be a great time for us to offer some coupon codes in the future. This is all important information that we can increase play and, and give some opportunity to, to increase some revenue at the golf course. This is a little wider spread look that goes throughout, um, all the months, but it gives it on time-of-day basis when we're busiest. Uh, we're busiest at nine, ten, eleven AM, uh, which, which seems pretty, pretty great. We have some, some room there at the three and the four o'clock range, we can kind of get those up somewhere in the future, but, uh, the dark green is green fee revenue, and the, uh, the light green is the cart revenue in relation to other times. This here, this customer segmentation, this is a, this is just an example I gave you of how we can filter out information in the system. So what I did here, I just took a few people that was in, in the Bs. When I, when I segmented out, I wanted public players who have played the golf course at least twenty times. And the reason why I did that, and the reason why this information would be useful for us, is that we can reach out to these folks individual and try to convince them to become members. It makes sense for them, if they're going to play our golf course that many times, uh, for them to go on and become members, because they've already spent enough money to pay for a membership if they play at least twenty times. I didn't filter out people who played forty and fifty times, and we have plenty of those people as well, because I'll happily accept their revenue if they want to keep paying us to come play forty or fifty times and pay the green fee. That's, that's fine with me. Uh, but these people that are on the fringe, normally, like statistics show, if you can get the people that normally play twenty, twenty-five times and convert them into members, they'll bump that up to about forty, forty-five times. Yeah, if they, if they determine the membership is worthwhile. Uh, the customer overview, this is what I was referring to earlier. We have twenty-three hundred and six unique customers in our database, and that means individual profiles that are different. There is, if I had to guess, there's probably a four percent. You know, some people that have crossed over, maybe have been entered twice in there, and we're trying to always trying to get on top of that data and get them out of the system. It's a, it's a kind of a, a process that we actually have to reach out to Lightspeed and get them to delete, and we can't do it on our end. That's a built-in protection for auditing purposes. But, uh, if we find some redundancy in there, we try to get rid of it. But you can see the breakdown. We have over twenty-one hundred public players that are unique, um, adult members, a hundred and twelve, thirty-three junior members, all-inclusive members, thirteen. Put the staff members in there, because I wanted to give them their own separate categories. I don't want them affecting revenue numbers when I want to look at revenue numbers. Um, so it's, it's kind of good that I can break that down. As you can tell, ninety-three percent of our customers are public players, seven percent are members of those twenty-three hundred. Want to wrap things up by giving you the last couple of slides here. This is a, uh, calendar. A year-up-to-date is some interesting information, kind of looks very similar to the previous slide I'd showed you. Two hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue. That's losing almost the entire month of July, which I figured we lost at least thirty thousand dollars revenue there. It gives me the average, amount that people spend when they walk through that door and come to our golf course. That, we're averaging eighteen dollars and sixty-four cents per person that comes there. Uh, that'll be a great benchmarking number to have for the future. If we want to, if we want to implement some price changes to increase revenue, we can see how that, that affects us, especially for offering coupon codes for, for certain days to, uh, increase that occupancy rate. This will be valuable information for us. And then lastly, I'll just leave you with the business plan that was submitted uh, February ninth, twenty twenty-one to council. Um, if we adopt the changes that we, we've had recently at the golf course, this model was based off a net positive of six hundred thousand dollars, uh, revenue for an eight-year time spirit, if, if we were to get new carts and implement point of sale and some other tree trimmings and other things that we had on the, on the business plan that the ad hoc committee had come up with. Uh, and the, we didn't get our carts until late. We didn't get them till October. Uh, so in the first eight months, as you can tell, FY twenty twenty-two, our goal, our bench, our goal, our benchmark to hit this plus-six-hundred-thousand rate was one eighty-two. We did two fifty, seven thirty-nine. And you can tell all the breakdowns of what our goals were, twenty thousand membership, we did forty-two thousand, one-ten in cart rentals, we did one-twenty, fifty-one in green fees, we did eighty-seven thousand dollars. So I'm, I'm proud of the staff that implemented these changes. It was, it was a transition, you know, that took some, took some education, you know, for, for a lot of our staff, and I appreciate their hard work and their willingness to do it. And, uh, I appreciate the support we got from council. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions by council members?
Eric. When, uh, somebody reserves, uh, a, a tee time or a cart, do they pay a deposit, or do they just pay when they get there?
They pay upon arrival. The, the good news about this system is, we haven't implemented it yet, because we have some, some problems with, uh, Lightspeed talking with our credit card company, but one of the things we can implement is customers, when they fill out a profile, they can upload a credit card number, and they can, they can pay in advance, or every time they come in and pay in person, they can just choose to use the number on file, which will really speed up process and make it convenient for us as well. We're looking forward to getting there.
Any additional questions or comments?
Just curious, is this cloud-based, this, the system?
Totally cloud-based, yes.
Hope you got good internet.
I know. Yeah, there's been a couple scary times, you know, where we've had internet go out, and luckily, we have a laptop there with a hotspot for backup in case we run into some issues like that. We learned, not the hard way, but we had an issue come up and it made us nervous for like five minutes on a busy Saturday afternoon. And, uh, you know, we started. And, you know, we started doing all the hand stuff, you know, you know, telling people, hey, just, you know, give us a few minutes, but it worked out.
Does the, I'm sorry, does the light speed want you to, to handle the credit cards through them?
Yes, yeah, and they're, they keep sending us incentives to do, so I'm really pushing to do that, actually. I think the hang-up for us initially was the transaction fee.
They, that's the thing, is they, they make a, they make a decent amount of money yeah, offer you on those fees, because that, I did the same thing with toast, and, and I'm toast.
Right, are you, so, so for us, our, our prices, like, our, most of our transactions are decent, you know, they're at least mostly around twenty bucks at least, unless you're doing just a card, it's fifteen, but they're only charging us five cents a transaction if we do it.
You can't beat that.
Yeah, yeah, five cents is what it would cost us. You know, and actually, we would get a lower percentage rate than what we're paying with our current credit card provider, so it's just a matter. The, the initial thing, they were trying to help out with us to work with the city's credit card, they were trying to build a gateway system to help us work a little more efficient, it hasn't come to fruition yet, so I don't, I don't know if it's ever going to, so I would like to just go ahead and, and make the change. And actually, I've been in discussion with Jesse about doing that, so. And I, I think that's somewhere we're going to go.
Well, it makes you able to look at a lot of the information from home or from off, other offices.
It's from a, from a management standpoint, and from a convenience and speed standpoint, it would be amazing. Because our, our process is a little clumsy with credit cards, as it stands.
Counselor Mead.
So you've been collecting data for about a year now?
Yes, ma'am.
And any surprises, did you learn anything?
Yes.
You talked about Friday between ten and whenever being your busiest time, you all didn't know that already?
Oh, we, 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 you know, you, you can suspect, I mean, obviously, I can suspect that just about at any public golf course, those times are going to be slow.
Yeah.
But it's not, the main purpose of this for the first year for us is to build some benchmarking before we make any changes, so I think that would give us a good base for when we do pivot, we can actually see the impact of those pivot points. Because before, previously, we had nothing, so I had nothing to base, base against, so I didn't want to come in and make all these changes like all at once and not be able to substantiate and justify the impact of what they have, so I would love to be able to justify some coupon programs or maybe some corporate memberships, say for example, this is something done previous at another golf course. And say, for example, we may give Best Buy or Amazon, hey, buy a corporate membership for X amount of dollars, and your players can come here and play on Mondays or Wednesdays after ten o'clock for twelve, for this fee. And that's how we generated extra revenue at some other golf courses, and it worked out very well, because they filled dead times that we had, we, we gave them an extra bonus as a service for their employees, and it was a win-win.
Are there a lot of employers in town who have, like, large groups of employees that play golf at Gypsy Hill?
Yes, yeah, yeah, so I'll give you an example, so now it'd be almost twenty-five years ago when I was the head professional in Ingleside. We, we did that corporate benefit, and, and we had Nipco, Hershey, Target Distribution Center, when they just started coming on board, it was pretty close, they just got started. Trying to think, anyway, we had about five that would, that would come there, and you know, if they're sending just ten people on those days, that's great revenue for the course, especially over a span of a year, and if you got four or five different companies doing that.
And I had a question about it, I think when you talked about this system a year ago, your intent was to use differential pricing based on demand?
It's called dynamic pricing, so, yeah, so basically, it, it's a, it's a feature that light speed offers you, and then what they do, they benchmark it and compare it to other courses that are in their database. And we could pay an extra fee to have them give us suggestions for pricing, and another trade-off that light speed, another way they want to try to make revenue is is we actually can have this system totally free to us on a monthly basis if we want to, but, and the trade-off is that we give them two time slots a day, and they market those, and whether or not they fill them or not, that they get the revenue for that. I didn't want to have any outside influence for the first year after we do this, because I just wanted to see where we stood, and I didn't want to take away anything from our members, because we were really selling the whole membership thing. The values you get for coming to member, and I didn't want anything to impede my ability to service our members first, to find out where we stand.
And, and have you actually started sending out these sort of cell phone and email blast communications?
No, we're not going to start that until the spring. I wanted to have a, a good full year, and actually, what I put in the business plan was actually to have a year after our membership promotion is open, but, over with, but since we kind of got bumped later with the cart delivery, I'm going to start it first thing in the spring, because that way we'll have information to work off of.
Thank you.
Sure.
Um, Counselor Claffey.
Well, I just want to update, or get James to update everybody on the condition of the clubhouse. As y'all know, the July storm hit it hard, and, and we're not using the clubhouse, we have some trailers out front. It's making it very difficult to work out of, and, and we're not, we're not getting merchandise revenue, because there's no place to sell merchandise, and you, you know, they're trying to sell some snacks and stuff out of a, well, out of a table.
Yeah, it's actually, the, the pro benefits from all that, that's part of his contract, and I actually feel bad for that, but on top of that, I feel the, the worst for the staff that has to come in there, we're literally working out of a storage shed with a space heater in it. The IT was good enough to run over all of our computer cables, and there's some power there and things like that. But as you can imagine, it took some time for us to get some bids back on pro, the pro shop repairs, so it's, it's, it's not, we can't even walk in there, it's, the condition is so bad, a tree fell through the roof, water leaks in there, just about every time it rains, we've been trying to get patched, we've had problems with contractors coming there and doing some work and not being, I guess, efficient in the job that they do there, in order to rectify things. We had just put brand-new carpet in the pro shop two weeks before the storm hit, and now it's totally ruined. So we're going to have to go through mold remediation, replacement of walls, drywall, a new roof, and we're working with the insurance company on things like that, and the last I checked with our contractor that's supposed to come perform that work, they're, they're telling me they're going to do everything they can to get us in by the end of the year, but they were supposed to have been here.
I did notice one other thing, if you don't mind telling me, this was in the financial information, so it might be a Jesse question rather than a you.
Sure.
But I noticed in September, we had close to seven hundred dollars of collections fees.
I'm not familiar with that.
Is that, are those credit card fees actually, and not collections fees, there's three hundred and fifty dollars in October, and I'm sorry?
Collection fees would be the credit card fees.
Great, thank you. I, I didn't think, I didn't think we'd be having to send collectors after golfers for their green fees.
What? Thank goodness.
How much do you pay light staff a month for the, the services?
Sure, the good question, so we initially wanted to try out several services that they had. So I think they started charging us in, so they gave us the first month or two, you know, for acclimation kind of to the system. I believe we started paying in December of last year, and it was two ninety a month, this subscription fee, we've since knocked that down to two forty a month. I got rid of one of the features on there that we just weren't utilizing, that wasn't worthwhile to us, and we probably would do a little bit more trimming as well, as we kind of, as I kind of get the information I kind of was looking for initially, and kind of want to pivot off of a few things that'll probably be something our department kind of whittles down even a little bit more.
When they, and would they, then they would trade you out if you would give them free spots?
Correct, and they actually have a value, so say like, for example, if I was to give them one set of tee times on a Monday through Thursday, they would discount a hundred dollars, you know, if they can do that, if I would give them a tee time on the weekends, it would be maybe a hundred and fifty dollars, so they all have a value.
They would understand that if you were doing a, a, a
A tournament.
Tournament and stuff, that that would.
Correct, and basically what they do is they bounce later to the days, they give us a timeframe in order to reserve those blocks.
As long as they don't want your premium hours, I, I think that would be.
Yeah.
Fair.
It, it, yeah, and so what, what I think we'll probably move forward with is we'll probably, for the next year, maybe starting in the spring, we'll try that method, just see how, if it adversely affects us or not, you know, in a big, in a big way. I basically wanted to get all the revenue numbers I could the first time around, just to create a nice benchmark for us, so we could kind of weigh those options.
Any additional questions or comments?
Yes, this is Carolyn Dole. With the information that customers key in, are you actually isolating who are Stanton residents by themself reporting yes in that field?
Yeah, that's, that's actually, if people, so what we're doing, we're going to, in the spring, once again, once we have, we feel like a full season, which we just completed, and we'll wait till golf season rolls around. We will incentivize people to go on and complete their profile, and that's part of their profile. So a lot of people don't even want to relinquish to us phone numbers and emails, but if they actually, if we incentivize them, say for example, if we send out a coupon code, if you complete your profile, you can come, you know, have a cart ride for ten dollars or something. I don't know how we're going to do that, because, you know, we have a lot of people that we've got to complete their profile, and I don't want to penalize them for actually helping us out early, but that's probably a promotion somewhere, or we might have a drawing for something. Yeah, but that's the only way we can get it, is they choose to, to fill out that information.
Is anybody verifying that to be accurate?
With.
If you start, if you, if you were to start giving discounts to Stanton residents, then everybody would say yes, they're a Stanton resident.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not considering that option as of right now, to give a discount.
Okay, I thought that was one of the possibilities. Well, for our, for our purposes, looking at budget expenditures, because you're only looking at revenues here, you're not looking at the costs. You know, it's important to know actually how many Stanton residents are utilizing the golf course. And so to me, that, I, the accuracy of that data is, is really important.
So we did, we.
Just having somebody say, yeah, I am, and, and then, you know, I, I don't, people can make mistakes, and people can say, oh, I could get a better, better deal if I'm a Stanton resident. And somebody should be validating that.
Just to let you know, we did that study in twenty twenty-one with every customer that came in, we got the percentages and data that we were looking for. So eighteen percent of our customers were Stanton residents, and forty-three percent of our play was by Stanton residents, we actually did that case study for the entire year to, so we could have those numbers to work forward, so no matter what number you got for a month or a year, you could apply those percentages and have a really good idea about who was coming there. I, I've never entertained the idea of giving a discount to Stanton residents, not because I don't have, love Stanton, I am a Stanton resident. So, I mean, not that I would love to, because it's, I think for us on a frontline staff, it would be too clumsy for us, for the exact reasons, just what you just said. Everybody and their brother would be a Stanton resident if they come in, and it would be too clumsy to sit there and try to validate every single person that would come in, and it would be adverse effect on our customer service.
That's too bad, because we were told that this software would enable you to accurately give us that, that figure, how many Stanton residents use the golf course, so that's disappointing to hear.
Well, I, well, Carolyn, I would, I, I think we could probably, I'm sure they could find line the thing, but I don't really care whether it's a Stanton resident, because I'm pretty sure Stanton resident, Augusta County resident, or New Jersey resident, their money spends just as well as anybody else's.
Well, that would be true if, if this was making a profit, but, but we're subsidizing this golf course. Stanton residents are subsidizing the golf course, so I think it is important, you know, from a tax, people pay, their taxes go to support this golf course, and if the majority of people are non-Stanton residents, then it begs the question, maybe non-Stanton people should be paying more, to use the golf course, for example.
But, but as a, another point, what about the swimming pool, right across from the, from the golf course? We don't ask them if they're from Augusta County or if they're from Stanton, if they show up and pay their money, they can go to the pool. And that pool certainly doesn't make much money at the end of the year, by the time we pay everything, it's a service we're providing. And it's a service we're providing to a lot of citizens, and we do know how many Stanton citizens are playing, we can figure that out. But it's not like we're charging different rates.
Well, you know, the swimming pool, the usage of that, of the two pools are in excess, the last time I saw a figure, of fifteen thousand. So it's being utilized well, but the golf course doesn't come close to that figure. And, and so it just begs the question.
Thousand rounds a year?
It would be great to have accurate data, that's all I'm saying.
It's right, it's right there on the screen, you can see the trend. FY twenty-two, more than doubled what FY twenty twenty did, and you know, a hundred percent increase out of any business in two years, I think is pretty phenomenal.
Well, we're going against COVID numbers, but also, if you can get them to fill out the, the, their registration, it asks for an address. And if somebody puts an address, you should be able to pull it up by zip code or something like that, I would think.
We used to previously do zip codes, but that wasn't satisfactory.
Well, I'm just saying here, and you, and you're, and you're, the one that you filled out, you put your street address and everything.
Yeah.
So you'd be able to pull that up, I guess you could sort it by addresses and stuff like that.
But that was, that was the reason why we had that custom field added strictly for us, we were the only, I talked to the folks at Light Speed, we're the only golf course that even has that feature, and it's a custom field for us, so as of right now, it's not sortable, like, I can't go in and just click a button and automatically sort. I actually have to go in and, we have to go in and physically count, which we've done numerous times. So far, that would get, that would get very clumsy as we get into the thousands, if we would ever get to that point. But at least for our membership, we at least go in there and do that for our members, and you know, and that, and that's, hopefully that give you a good idea, but we actually did the study for every single person that walked in that door in twenty twenty-one, what the percentage was of people that were Stanton residents, and which ones that were unique Stanton residents, and those are the figures I discussed earlier.
Any additional questions or comments? Well, thank you very much.
I appreciate the time, thank you, and once again, I will say this on behalf of the Stanton employees I talked to, a sincere thanks to you guys for the bonus, I know that's very appreciated, and the morale has been great, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, as mentioned earlier, item F has been taken off of the agenda, so that takes us to item G, a consideration of resolution establishing the City of Stanton's twenty twenty-three legislative program. Ms. Bowergard.
John Blair is here this evening to walk through this item.
Welcome.
Thank you, good evening, Council, Mayor Oaks. First, before getting into the details, I did want to let you know, our office has been in contact with Delegate Avoli and Senator Hanger. Delegate Avoli would not be available for your December eighth meeting, but Senator Hanger's office has said he would be available. And as you know, typically, you do have one or both of them here to discuss the legislative program that you adopt. Turning to that program itself, as you recall, at your October twenty-seventh meeting, there was a work session item on this, and during that work session item, Mayor Oaks had a proposal that a majority of council supported adding to the legislative program. That proposal refers to the state legislature and asking them to refrain from interfering or shortening timeframes of a referendum. Counselor Mead had a couple of proposals, one related to same-sex marriage, and one related to reproductive rights, and the council, there was not a majority of council support to add those to the program for your consideration tonight. Additionally, Counselor Dole mentioned the Shenandoah Valley Juvenile Center item and had questions about that, so that was taken off pending information from this, for the city manager to call from the director of the center. Ms. Bowergard did contact the director of the center, he has informed her that the youth commission set up by the General Assembly did not support consolidation of any of the juvenile centers in the Commonwealth, and therefore, that has been taken out of your legislative package. Also, Counselor Claffey at the last meeting looked at the Chesapeake Bay stormwater provisions and asked for some clarification there. Additionally, Counselor Mead asked that the item itself also indicate that the council wasn't fa, in favor of the Chesapeake Bay Restoration Program, so it does reflect that, that language, as well as Counselor Claffey's desire as well as Counselor Claffey's desire for a little more streamlined language there. You may, well, you probably do recall, at the regular meeting on October 27, there was a public hearing. The council received a number of public comment proposals. After that hearing, I wrote them down the next day and emailed them to council and asked that council reply to the email with any proposals that they heard during that public hearing that they would like added to the program. Counselors Dole and Mead replied that they would like all of the items that were stated during that public hearing added to the program. No other counselors responded, so therefore none of those items are in the program itself before you tonight. That's a recap and sort of explain, and I do want to make one other comment. At the October 27 public hearing, there were some questions about automatic registration, that being taken out of the program. Actually, and Counselor Mead did send an email, and I replied to the council as a whole. Actually, Virginia does now have both automatic and same-day registration for voters. So that's why that's taken out of the program. Those two, during the 2020 and 2021 sessions of the General Assembly, both of those reforms have been enacted in state.
Are there any questions for Mr. Blair?
So just to clarify.
Yes.
You provided a list of the suggestions from the public to all members of city council, and only two members of city council responded.
Correct.
So five of seven city council members didn't respond at all.
Correct.
Okay. And so none of the items that the public requested be included on our legislative agenda were actually included.
Correct.
And, and Carolyn said something the other day that I thought was, was funny. That process has the appearance of, sort of, I think she called it playing footsie with FOIA. And, and so I, I, I got some clarity on that from the FOIA council about the process of polling members of council via email, which is essentially a vote, and not, but not in public. And so Mr. Gernhardt informed me that the process was not a violation of FOIA.
Any additional questions or comments? Right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
This is Carolyn Dole.
Counselor Dole.
I move that city council adopt the resolution establishing the City of Stanton's 2023 legislative program, including the two requests from Ms. Mead regarding women's reproductive rights and gay marriage rights.
I'll second that.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor by Counselor Dole and a second by Counselor Brenda Mead. Any further discussion? I would just like to state that this is, the legislative proposals, they're basically a wish list. We, as a council, do not have any authority concerning state issues. That's a power that we do not have. When it comes to state issues, you would need to go to your state representatives or your, if it goes further than, than that, your federal representatives, to start adding issues that are beyond the power and the scope of this council is sending, you're going to basically be sending a book to our elected officials at the state level, whether it be John Avoli or Emmett Hanger. And we've been told that there's some localities that do not even do this, such as Waynesboro and Harrisonburg. And I can only guess they do not even submit legislative proposals, because the Virginia Municipal League, they submit proposals, legislative proposals. And VML represents member localities throughout the state, and they are a powerful lobbyist firm. So the state issues need to go through VML. Issues for Stanton needs to be directed towards issues that affect every citizen, such as clean drinking water, infrastructure. If we start adding all these different issues and matters that this council has no control over, then we are opening up a Pandora's box. We might as well go ahead and add religious freedoms and women's right to vote. Now, when it comes to gay rights as an active liaison for the DEI Commission, the gay community knows where I stand, just like I'm sure the community knows where I stand on women having the right to vote. So we need to take another look at the length of our legislative proposals, because when you're submitting a book, we don't know what's going to happen to it when it, when it's given to our representatives at the state level. It could go in the trash, for all we know. Again, it's a wish list. And I do not, do not feel that two very important issues should be used as a political weapon against fellow council members. That is wrong, and that is not the way of the Stanton City Council, we are better than that. Mr. Kessinger, please call the role. Mr. Kessinger, please call the role.
I would like to amend Ms. Dole's motion and offer a compromise that we include, well, first, I need to read this to you. This is from the Constitution of Virginia, Section 15-A, Marriage, that only a union between one man and one woman may be a marriage valid in or recognized by this Commonwealth and its political subdivisions. This Commonwealth and its political subdivision shall not create or recognize a legal status for relationships of unmarried individuals that intends to approximate the design, qualities, significance, or effects of marriage. Nor shall this Commonwealth or its political subdivisions, cities like Stanton, create or recognize another union, partnership, or other legal status to which is assigned the rights, benefits, obligations, qualities, or effects of marriage. This section of Virginia's constitution is like an appendix. It lays benign and without purpose until an infection requires that it be removed. I would also like to read the following to you, how the constitution is amended. Any amendment or amendments to the constitution may be proposed in the Senate or House of Delegates by resolution, which shall contain such proposed amendment or amendments prepared in such form as is in accordance with that prescribed by the rules of the House of Delegates and Senate for deletions and additions of language, and be spread at length on the Journal of the House in which it is offered. And if it is agreed by, to by a majority of the members elected thereto with eyes and nose taken thereon, it shall be communicated to the other house, where it shall be dealt with in like manner. And when so agreed to by both houses, it shall be enrolled as provided by law and signed by the President of the Senate and Speaker of the House of Delegates. Such amendment or amendments shall thereupon stand referred to the General Assembly at its first regular session held after the next general election of members of the House of Delegates. If at such regular session, the proposed amendment or amendments shall be agreed to by a majority vote of all the members elected to each house, the General Assembly, Houses of the General Assembly, the same shall be submitted to the people not sooner than 90 days after final passage by a bill or resolution introduced for such purpose. And if the people shall approve and ratify such amendment or amendments by the majority of the electors qualified to vote for the members of the General Assembly voting thereon, such amendment or amendments shall become part of the constitution. So what I would like to do is ask that our legislators give Virginia citizens the right to be heard in a referendum on this item. I'm not asking you to endorse or not the marriage of, of gay people. I'm simply asking you that you allow or you encourage, not allow, but ask our legislators, they're the only people can do, who can do this for our people. They have twice refused to allow this to come to a referendum to the people of the Commonwealth of Virginia. And so that is all I'm asking, and that's what I would like to amend this, this, I would like to make a motion to amend our request that we ask our legislators to give Virginia citizens the right to be heard in a referendum on this issue.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
A second.
All right, so there's a second. That is with the, the one issue, correct?
And that's the only issue I'm asking for.
So I, as a compromise.
There are original, there are two motions on the floor.
There was the original amendment, and I've, I've asked for, to change that amendment.
So, so there was an original motion, and then there's been an amendment to that motion.
Who made the original motion?
Carolyn.
Ms. Dole.
Ms. Carolyn, Counselor Dole.
You withdrawing that original motion? I can't, you're muted.
Carolyn.
You're muted.
She's amending that original motion.
Are you withdrawing?
So she's asking that, I'm not withdrawing it, it's being amended. We're, we will vote on whether to amend it or not.
But on her side.
So she's asking, instead of us just using the language of her original and all of the public that, that contacted us, who, who asked us to support gay rights and gay marriage with our legislators. So instead of doing that, she wants us to have the legislators allow the people to vote. I still want to include women's bodily autonomy. And you can use Ms. Mead's original statement or not, but that's important to people as evidenced in the election, and I don't think we should leave it out.
Okay, but Counselor Mead, your motion is simply to have.
Simply to ask our legislators to, to allow this matter to become, to come before the citizens of the Commonwealth in a referendum. They have the power to do that.
Mr. Blair.
And as, just for clarification, still the language that Ms. Dole or Counselor Dole offered regarding abortion reproductive rights would still remain. This amendment is purely to change the language regarding the same-sex marriage?
Well, I, I'm, like I said, I'm, well, first, I want to say to, to citizens, all of the issues that you brought forward in the public hearing are important to me. And women's reproductive rights are important to me. The issue of gay marriage is important to me. I don't believe that we are going to be successful in obtaining the agreement of other members of council to add all of those items. So I, what I am proposing is that we, that we at least have one successful issue come out, that came out of the public. This request that our legislators move forward to a referendum to allow that, that will, that will eliminate this part of the constitution, to amend our constitution, and that should be put before the citizens of the Commonwealth. We, we need to, as we've heard so many times in this room, we need to hear from the people on this issue.
I just, I kind of think we should put both of them back on there and just have them both be put on for a vote by the, by the people. I think that would be, then we know whether or not that people were for a woman's right to choose or for, for gay rights, and I mean, I.
Right now, as it stands, couples, same-sex marriage is legal in the state of Virginia.
Now, but it could be illegal if the Supreme Court, the Supreme Court could pass them, they could repeal that amendment. And then it could, then the state would automatically could fall back on the amendment that, I mean, the amendment we have in the Virginia. I don't know how, it would be, it would be a financial nightmare for lawyer. I mean, it would just be such a mess, it's hard to believe what it would be like, but.
I'm going to ask Mr. Blair to address it.
Well, as you probably all remember, I believe it was 2015, there was the Obergefell decision. And what that decision ultimately held, the 14th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution applies its due process and equal protection provisions to the state. And the U.S. Supreme Court found that, I believe it was in California, had a similar constitutional amendment to Virginia, that that state constitutional provision violated the 14th Amendment of the United States Constitution. And with that decision, that voids the enforcement and the ability for our Commonwealth or state to enforce their constitutional amendment, their constitutional amendments that relate to same-sex marriage. But a Supreme Court decision does not automatically delete the text of these provisions, and, and I'll give you an example. Yesterday, there were some ballot initiatives in states that still regard, were, that still had the mention of slavery in their constitution. Those referendums yesterday were just to delete that from the constitution. Currently, Virginia's constitution still has the text of the amendment regarding same-sex marriage. It's not enforceable, but it's still, if you were to ask the state librarian to give you a copy of the constitution, that amendment would still be listed. It's not been deleted, so to speak, simply because the Supreme Court ruled that it violated the U.S. Constitution.
Okay, so Counselor Mead, your motion, is it to have a a vote by the people, a referendum to delete that from, to delete that verbiage altogether?
The item I would like to have added to our legislative agenda is that the people of Stanton ask our senator and, ask Senator Hanger and Delegate Avoli to work to move forward with the repeal of, of Section 15 dash A of the Virginia constitution. And they, they will know the process, we don't have to tell them that a referendum has, has to occur. That process has, they've attempted to go through that process twice now and, and, and have not been able to get the votes together to do so. So that, that's, that is what I would like to have added to our legislative agenda. That, that our, that Senator Avoli, Senator Hanger, and Delegate Avoli will work with their fellow legislators to move forward with the process to repeal Section 15. fellow legislators to move forward with the process to repeal Section 15 Point A of the Constitution.
And again, just for clarity, that's concerning, asking the delegates and the state senator to move to have that repealed. And they'll know the process, like you mentioned, it's not including anything else.
Like I said, it's a compromise. Sometimes you have to compromise in life to get a little bit when you can't get everything you want. And so, you know, some other, some people may say it's the wrong item to compromise on. Others may say that compromising is immoral and wrong if it, if it doesn't follow your beliefs. In this case, I, I'd like to get, you know, ha- half a bill rather than none.
This is Carolyn Doll. I, I'm not willing to give away women's right to her own body. I'm not willing to give that up i- in order to get a compromise. You know, that's like, that's like saying, well, we'll let women go back to being barefoot and pregnant with no, no rights to property, no rights to anything. I am not in favor of that. I can't imagine anyone being in favor of that. But that's where women are right now. We're on the cusp of not having any rights to birth control. They're, they're already talking about bills that are going to do this. And it is not right to women. It doesn't affect me personally, but I, I cannot let our millennials, Gen Xers, Gen Zs have to live in a, in a Handmaid's Tale story.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. Um, is there a second?
What is the motion?
All right, um, all right, once again, Counselor Mead, if you could read your motion or state your motion, your, your amendment, your amendment.
I, I think I did and Carrie seconded it.
And, and, and I don't, I don't know why we can't just request them to put these items to a vote on, on a state level. And I tell you, if you've ever had to fight for your rights, I grew up, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not African-American, but I grew up gay. And it's really hard to be gay and, and, and not have the same rights, you know, that other people have. And it's, and the biggest thing that I get from people about being gay, you know, it's like, oh, you run around, you're, you're, you're slut or whatever, you know? And most gay people just want the same thing that straight people have. You know, they just want to be married, they want to have maybe a family, they, they, they want to be as normal as possible.
And you have that right.
Well, we have it right now, but I mean, you know, it could easily be pulled right out from under us.
Well, again, it's an opening a Pandora's box. Let's go ahead and add religious freedoms and women's right to vote.
Religion's freedom should be in there. Everybody should have to worship the way they-
These go beyond our authority.
No, they don't.
It does, it does.
It goes beyond your, your, wanting to let it happen.
I tell you what, so we had a motion, an amended motion on the floor. We had a second, but you're withdrawing the second. Mr. Blair, can you give us some guidance?
Is there any other second?
Any other second?
I want to know if the motion still includes women's rights.
Not my motion, Carolyn.
Okay, then I won't, I will not second that.
In that case, the motion dies for lack, the, the amendment dies for lack of a second.
We have to have a motion. I mean, excuse me, a second, do we have to have a second to the amendment?
Yeah.
For the amendments.
Well, no, no, before, we had this discussion that technically seconds are not necessary.
Legally, the Attorney General has said a second is not necessary. The practice of this council has been you don't vote without a second.
Okay.
But does it have to have a second? No. Legally, the Attorney General of Virginia has said local government motions do not require a second.
Does the council continue to request, require a second?
Let's not set a precedent.
Dies without a second.
Okay, all right, so-
This is Carolyn Doll. I would like to amend my own motion since there's no second.
Well, hold on, hold on, Carolyn, give me, give me one second. So the amended motion fails and we're back to the original motion.
Correct. I would like to amend my own motion to include the language that Ms. Mead just read about allowing the people to vote on the constitution, repealing the constitutional amendment. And adding that, but keeping women's, uh, women's health and reproductive rights and bodily autonomy and not making them second-class citizens.
Right, there's a-
I second that.
An amended motion on the floor and there's a second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Kessaker, please call the roll.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
No.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
No.
Mayor Oaks.
No.
Motion fails.
All right, so the motion fails and we move on to item G.
Madam Mayor.
All right, Counselor Claffey.
I move that we approve the legislative agenda as presented with no amendments.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Second.
I didn't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, second.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor, there's a second, any further discussions?
I'm going to vote for this just because all these other things are really good for our community and our, and our people. But I, I'm only doing this because I don't want to, just because of my issue or some, or, or women's issues, I don't want to stop something that might help us out legislature, through the legislature. But I tell you right now, I think it's a travesty and I really do think that, you know, we should look out for all of our citizens, not just a certain group of citizens. And I think that's the way this is coming out.
This is Carolyn Doll.
That's her doll.
This is Carolyn Doll. I, I will be voting no on this because this whole thing has become a travesty.
Yes.
Some, some of you are not paying any attention to what the public actually wanted included in this legislative program. So it's now just a farce. You're, you know, when you say, we don't have any authority over any of that stuff, what do you, what authority do we have over, say, pediatric cancer research? We don't have any authority over that.
So tax credit.
It's fine to have that in there. I don't have a problem with it, but the, the, the comparison is ludicrous.
Well, Carolyn, actually, we can provide funding to outside agencies that help to promote pediatric cancer awareness.
Well, then why do you have it in here for the state legislators? We, you can just take the-
Well, again, again-
And donate it all to pediatric cancer research.
Okay, again, when it comes to issues that this council truly has no authority over, and I appreciate being given the power, but we do not have that power at the local level. Hold on, um, issues like that need to be taken up with the Virginia Municipal League, a powerful lobbyist firm, and they're not even on their legislative proposals. We need to focus on issues that affect every single citizen. Again, water quality, infrastructure. So that's what we can control. Mr. Kessaker, please call the roll.
This is Carolyn Doll.
Call, call the roll. Carolyn, you've already spoken, I've already called for the roll.
I have not finished speaking on this.
No, you have, you've-
I am not. I have, I have the right to speak right now.
Right.
And I'm going to say that it's a shame, shame on the people who are going to vote for this, this abridged, modified, whatever suits you kind of legislative program and ignoring all of the public here. All of the public that spent time sending us emails, speaking in matters from the public, speaking at the public hearing, you ignore all of them.
Right, Counselor, Counselor Doll, Counselor Doll, that is not-
Shame on you.
No, no, Counselor Doll, we do have people that contact us directly. We've had people to stop us in the grocery stores, we've had people to stop us when we're downtown, we've had people to stop us at church, we've had people contact us.
And they tell you that they want you to be bigoted and to treat people as second-class citizens.
No, 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 they want us to be able to-
Women are over 50% of our population.
All right, Counselor Doll, please stop, stop the disruption with the yelling, please. Just take the yelling.
I don't have much more opportunity, except I will be back with matters from the public every chance I get.
All right, that, that's fine, you have that right.
And you're ignoring the public, this is what you deserve.
We're not ignoring the public, we have, we have heard from the public. And the public says-
What did they say?
They're saying, take the state matters with, to the state, we do not have the authority. Concentrate on issues that affect every citizen in the city.
Not one person contacted me and said that.
Well, I, I cannot help that, maybe-
And that's all of city council, so is this, are these people-
Carolyn, Carolyn, you gotta let me speak, okay?
Are these people ashamed to, in public, what they believe?
Maybe they feel like you're, they're not going to be heard because they already know your viewpoints may or may not be different. I don't know, I don't know why they're not reaching out to you. But like I said, I believe the gay community knows where I stand on the issue of gay marriage.
They're going to know.
It's all, it's all a matter, it's all a matter. Well, Carolyn, all right, yeah, I'm not going to, I'm not going to. Carolyn, it's, it's a matter, no, it's a matter-
Go ahead, Andrew.
Carolyn, Carolyn, stop with the outbursts, Carolyn.
It's time to do it, go ahead.
Carolyn, come on, stop with the outbursts. Carolyn, state matters, we have no authority over, this needs to be handled by the Virginia Municipal League, and they don't even have it in their legislative proposals.
Andrew, you're so full of crap.
All right. Carolyn, we do not, we are a locality and we have to focus on what we have the power and the control over, and that's what we need to ask for. So now, I'm trying, I've, I've called for it once. Mr. Kessaker, please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey.
Better refresh me.
Yeah, you made the motion.
Ms. Doll.
No.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
No.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, that takes us on to Matters from the City Manager, Ms. Bowrigard.
I have a few items this evening. Just to remind everybody that the administrative offices will be closed tomorrow, Friday 11th, and observe it's a Veterans Day. The recycling center will also be closed, but will be open regular hours on Saturday the 12th. And finally, the Stanton Public Library will be closed tomorrow, but again, will be open again on the 12th for regular schedule. Secondly, Stanton Parks and Recreation earlier this week won a Virginia Recreation and Park Society Award at the annual state conference. And I'm sorry that Chris and James just left. They won it for the Gypsy Hill Park front entrance renovation. And this is a highlight of each year's conference, and it's a formal presentation of awards judged by a peer jury. And the statewide program honors individuals, departments, and organizations throughout Virginia who have demonstrated excellence in any of the several areas during the previous year. Sixty-nine applications were vying, were received vying for awards in 15 different categories. So congratulations to Parks and Recreation for this great honor. And finally, the Virginia Scenic Railway is offering the Santa Express starting November 30th. You can buy tickets and get more information at virginianscenicrailway.com. That's all I have this evening.
That takes us on to Matters from the Public. Read Rules for Matters from the Public. This part of city council's agenda is entitled Matters from the Public. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a wide variety of subjects. A copy of the Stanton City Council's Matters from the Public rules are available in paper form at the clerk's desk and online on the city of Stanton's webpage. You are asked to familiarize yourself with those rules before commenny. Please come to the podium or begin your call, identify yourself, and complete your remarks within five minutes. Okay, um, if you can just come to the podium, we'll start with the folks in the audience first, and then we'll alternate between folks in the audience to folks on Zoom. Again, if you can state your name, your address, and keep your remarks to five minutes. All right. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Jack Kirielyson, I live at 241 Thorn Rose Avenue in Stanton. It's a privilege to be here tonight, it was a privilege to be an election officer in this last election and to see Stanton at its absolute best. I can tell you honestly that I had no idea at the end of that 15-hour shift who had won and who had lost, but the spirit that I saw and the determination in Stanton citizens and the good feeling that prevailed in the precinct I worked reminded me of why I first moved here. It was very welcome to see, as opposed to what I just witnessed. I have in my hands the nine pages of the legislative agenda you just adopted. I called in two weeks ago and I was, I was quite a bit angrier because I was so upset at the way you treated Councilman Holmes. It just, it embarrassed me that a friend and colleague and someone that has worked so hard to find agreement on this very contentious council would be treated so disrespectfully by people who purported to be his friends. Welcome back, Vice Mayor, I'm so glad you could join us because I'm talking about my support for gay marriage. And I'm talking about my disappointment in the way you purported friends and colleagues of Mr. Holmes treated him both at the last meeting and tonight, and the slap in the face to the gay citizens of Stanton. The amount of terror that I have seen on display at whatever it is you're frightened of about gay marriage is a very interesting case study, let's put it that way. I'm sorry, Mayor, you're shaking your head, am I, am I bothering you? I, I certainly don't mean to do that.
I'm listening.
Good, thank you. I think, I heard you say that you only want to deal with matters that affect all of our citizens, such as, let's see, unclaimed remains, funeral expenses. City Council requests the General Assembly enact legis- Well, thank God we're going to take care of that, huh? Because that affects every one of us. Let's see, oh, sovereign immunity, this is a good one. We're very concerned that people who work for the government or local government officials might be liable for their actions. That certainly affects me, I'm real glad that's in there, thanks for thinking of me. Let's see, there's some more goodies in here. Eminent domain by private utilities for surveying, hadn't bothered me at all. Let's see, we've got broadband expansion, that's a good thing. We have criminal justice reform, who isn't for that? Here's a good one, economic development. The 20, 2020 General Assembly approved amendments to Section 2.2-3115 of the State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act may have created a major deterrent to continued participation by citizen volunteers on local blah, 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 blah. We wouldn't want to dilute these nine pages of deathless text with two sentences protecting the rights of, in one case, a majority of our citizens being women, and in the other case, our friends and neighbors who damage not one of us by their desire to, to be married and to stay married and to create stable homes. It embarrasses me that you've taken that position. Now, I'm going to leave that behind with my last minute and a half, and once again, congratulate Mr. Arrowood, Ms. Woods, and Ms. Edwards for their resounding victories. Here's a little, here's, here's some interesting data for you. The previous high in, in votes ever told since 2008, which is the only farthest back I can get state data on, the previous high was actually Mayor Oaks, congratulations in 2020. You exceeded the previous high of Mr. Kyer in 2008 by a, a full eight percent, that's pretty impressive. Mr. Arrowood exceeded your high by 69%, and I see Ms. Woods by 70%, and wow, Ms. Edwards by 82%. Wow, that's pretty impressive. Margin of victory, because there's a lot more people voted this time, so maybe that's a better metric, let's see. Your margin of victory in 2020 over the highest polling failed candidate, Ms. Oaks, was 12%. Mr. Arrowood, congratulations, 36%. Ms. Woods, 37%. Again, Ms. Edwards, 46% margin of victory, that's very impressive. I'd almost call that a mandate, and I would count you lucky to have three extremely civil, civic-minded, and good-hearted council members joining you. I would advise you not to waste this opportunity. Thank you.
All right. All right. Mr. Kessiker, does anyone have their hands raised?
No, ma'am.
All right, would anyone else from the audience care?
Joanne Tiger, 913 North Augusta Street. Every year, you can count on it, this time of year, it happens. There's been talk on social media for weeks now, I've been seeing. Where is it, where is it? Have you got yours? I haven't gotten mine, where's yours? Did you get yours? Barbara, did you get yours? Did you get yours, Alice? Margaret, did you get yours? Brad? What am I talking about? Your personal property tax bill.
Oh, I just got it.
I got mine yesterday, thanks for telling me, Barbara. Guess when it's due? Guess when it's due? December 5th? How many days is that until it's due?
That's right.
Not very many. Okay, I'm not here to gripe about that, but to ask for a change. Because, you know, when your property is, your personal property is assessed? Ding 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 ding, anybody know? January 1st. January 1st is when your personal property is assessed. I checked into this. If it were assessed yesterday, it would be lower than it was on January 1st. Anyway, the point being, your personal property is assessed on January 1st. Your bill gets here, it only has to be mailed at least fifteen days before the due date. With our mail, some people got them a couple of weeks ago. On Nextdoor app, it was like, "Oh, I got mine days ago, I got mine a week ago." I didn't get mine until yesterday, Barbara didn't get hers till today. The point being, it seems to me, a couple of years ago, I got mine in October, which gave a nice amount of time to at least figure out where I was going to pull the money from. A lot of people can't, on November the 10th, find $1,200 or $500, whatever, to pay the bill by December 5th. And if you don't pay it, it starts at ten percent penalty on January 1st if you don't get it paid on time. That's a lot of money. And it went up, what, it went way up this year. And I understand that. And you say, "Oh, well, blame the mail." Well, blame Amazon, blame Santa Claus, I don't care, one way or another, why not? And I know it's not really your, your place to say, Commissioner Revenue assesses them. True, however, wouldn't it be City Council's place to say, "Can't we change the ordinance? Can't we have personal property bills sent out in October?" It seems to me it would be a good thing to do. Not a thing to argue about, just a good thing to do for the people of Stanton. Because then everybody wouldn't be like pulling their hair, "I'm lucky, thanks to be to God, I can pay my bill." But there are probably a lot of people right now thinking, "Oh, I can't buy Christmas presents for my kids." Anyway, I think it would be a great thing to have the bill sent out in October. That's my main point. On an aside, for those of us with less highbrow hobbies as golf, it's alarming to find out that not only are we paying for those new golf carts, but we're paying for a new computer system too, woo-hoo! Anyway. That just really kind of burns to people who don't play golf, don't even like golf, but yet we're paying for all that while we're still paying for curbside recycling that we're not getting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Kessiker, does anyone have their hands raised?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, caller, you may begin. Caller, you may begin.
Hi, good evening, Yvonne Wilson, 2017 First Street. I am so sorry that I was not able to make it in, had to work late, and I just got off. But I wanted to call in just to say this was one heck of a race. And I am honored to have been able to take a part in such a vibrant and active voting community. And I know that a lot of people do not agree with my views. Some people may say that they are extreme. But whether you voted for me or not, I do appreciate in participating in such a wild and exciting and very informative election. And I do want to congratulate Alice Woods and Brad Arrowood, as well as Michelle Edwards. Michelle, thank you for sending a message, you know, congratulating us who did not win the election on a race well-run, and I appreciate that. You know, there are some that could take lessons from you three as far as having code of decorum. You are the winners of the election. Of course, I accept the results of the election. Yes, I will be running again, but that's because I do love the City of Stanton. I do love the voters and everyone that I engaged with, those who did agree with me, those who did not. I also want to thank everyone that supported us, you know, that even though we did not win, it is what it is, we were hurt, and I really appreciate that. And even though I did lose and I did not get the votes to sit in the, in the City Council, I will continue to stand up for what I believe in and to work in behind the scenes as far as still seeing if we can expand our transportation, our public transportation, see what can be done on the citizen side of things in helping our public safety, seeing what we can do about our infrastructure, because I still care about those things. Those weren't just talking points just to try and run a campaign. Those things came to my mind to fight for because I live it. So, again, congratulations. Oh, and the school board as well, Fontella Brown Bundy, Stephanie Mason, and Kristen Siegel, congratulations to you on winning as well. And this has been great, and I will see everyone again in 2024, but I will be around fighting for the rights of our city and improving it and making it a better place. You guys have a great evening. Bye.
Thank you. Right. Next.
Good evening, I'm Barbara Lee, 904 Rockaway Street, Stanton, Virginia. When I come to these council meetings, which I've been coming for over fifty years, and if you see me sitting and you stand up and pledge that flag, it's because, listen to the statement. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Until we get that, I will remain in my seat.
All right, Mr. Kessiker, does anyone have their hand raised?
No, ma'am.
All right. All right, welcome.
Thank you. Cindy Connors, 106A Skyline Avenue. The first thing I have is small, I'm going to start small because I'm all wound up. The closed captioning on the TV seems to have gotten much smaller since I started coming to these, and now it's almost unreadable, could we get it bigger? As far as the, the golf course goes, I was listening to the presentation earlier, and I'm confused by one of the things that was talked about, about the inability to give Stanton residents a discount or charge people outside more money that it would be so inconvenient. But all the places I've lived before, public entities like pools and golf courses, parks, et cetera, have always had different fees for residents versus outside people because the residents are already paying through their taxes. So I'm, I would like the golf course to pursue that. For example, up in Fairfax County, the public parks are completely free. If you show your driver's license and you live in Fairfax County, and they're $10, say, Blorun Park or up's $10 if you don't live there. About the recycling, I hope that we will pursue what Councilor Dole talked about, which is future grants for recycling programs from the state. In fact, we have a recycling section of our proposed legislative agenda, and we do all deserve curbside, I've talked about that at this microphone many times. And, let's see. So regarding the legislative agenda and the reason proposed for not including the two provisions of the fact that it's not the city's purview or different ways that's been expressed that we don't have purview over it, but as Jack said, that's the point of the entire legislative agenda, is to tell the state what we would like to do because we don't have the purview over it. That's the whole point of every single item on the entire agenda. I think unfortunately, the reason behind not supporting those amendments is what the mayor said, which is political, but it isn't us that made it political. I don't consider it political, I consider it a real-life thing. I don't know a single person that lives in Stanton that doesn't know someone that would be affected by reproductive rights for women. No one. You have a mother, you have a sister, you have a friend, you have an aunt, you have an uncle, you have, I mean, an aunt or whatever, you understand what I'm saying? And it's very personal, and women's health is crucial to this, to, to all of us. I don't know anyone untouched by that. And it's, it's just genuinely hurtful that that would be considered the only motivation for someone to introduce an amendment like that, is that we were trying to be political. As far as the same-sex marriage goes, we, we absolutely should support the repeal of that provision in the Virginia Constitution. Because all it takes is a new Supreme Court and a wave of a pen, and poof, that right goes away. And they deserve what exactly what Councilor Holmes says is the same right that everybody else wants. They want the same exact things we all do, which is family. So then the other thing is, many other things were proposed by citizens to go on the legislative agenda. For example, voting rights. I witnessed on Tuesday Ward Four and its terrible, dangerous parking situation, and I witnessed people go up there, not find a parking spot, and go back home and not vote. And one of the proposals I made is that we would allow citizens in Stanton to vote at any of the four, five wards on Election Day. And therefore, they could choose Gypsy Hill Park, say, for example, where there's plenty of parking. I don't know why things like that weren't considered on the legislative agenda, I certainly don't think they're political. I don't know why the City of Stanton wouldn't want the additional funding from the state if we lift the support cap for education right now. Why was that not considered to be put on the legislative agenda? I don't understand, and I'm very concerned about that. Hopefully, next year, the entire process with the legislative agenda will go differently, and it'll be driven by the citizens and the counselors, no offense to our lawyer, but not by the lawyer, but in public and in front of everyone. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Kessiker, does anyone have their hands raised?
No, ma'am.
I'm Dr. Miller.
Hello. Dr. Mary Miller, 471 Elbe Memorial Avenue. So, you know, I wasn't always a doctor. I was a nurse first. And I worked in New York City at Mount Sinai Hospital in 1965. That was before the New York State made abortion legal in 1970. And it was three years before we had intensive care units. So I wanted to earn extra money, and they offered us the opportunity to take care of patients that now would be in intensive care unit, but then we took care of them one-on-one. And so, one night, the patient that I took care of was a mother from Harlem with three or four children, and I don't know what her living situation was, but she was in constant convulsions from brain abscesses. And brain abscesses come from an infection. And she had shoved something up her cervix because she couldn't have another baby. So that baby was lost, that baby's mother was lost, the children at home lost their mother. And I haven't forgotten it. At the same time, a nurse from the hospital got pregnant. She went to New Jersey, and for $350, she got a safe, clean abortion. So that's the difference. If you're black, poor, from Harlem, and you can't, don't have healthcare, you do it yourself. And you die, and your children are left motherless. If you have a job and you have money, you can do it. Someone I knew in a county near here was married to a very wealthy man when she was eighteen. And I had lunch with her one day, and I said, "You know, that was a long time ago," I said, you know, I mean, I, I think it was, she was eighteen when she got married, so I think it was before the pill. So, and she was, she was a staunch Republican, I mean, I saw John Warner in her home. I mean, she was, you know, really with the issues. She was on top of everything, very powerful woman. So I said, "I don't understand, I said, "You got married at eighteen, how could, how could it be that you never got pregnant?" I had three abortions, just like I had pancakes for breakfast, I mean, it was nothing to her. So then, I was a school teacher up in the Adirondacks, and the last day of a school, one of the girls came to me and said, "I'm pregnant." And I said, "We have to tell your mother." She got on the bus, went home, and never saw her again. Well, her father was the father of her pregnancy, and she tried to commit suicide because she had no other choices. Now, why do fathers commit incest? Well, the primary reason is chronic unemployment. So this was a little tiny town up in the Adirondacks, and this man worked at Garnet Mines, up in the mountains. And so the solution to the problem was to fire him. So now he's got chronic unemployment. Well, this girl had two younger sisters. Guess what? Another man, so one year, there was this fifth-grade girl, and she was just the greatest little kid. And I came back in the fall, and she was a sixth grader, and she was from hell. Her father was handing her out to all the men who drove their lumber trucks through town. Who takes care of these people? You know, if, if you don't have money, you don't have power, you don't have concern, I'll tell you, there's nobody there. So that's my personal story, but I have many more.
Thank you. Mr. Kessiker.
No, ma'am.
All right, anyone from the audience?
Good evening, Zach Lewis, Rockaway Street, Stanton, Virginia. You know, I sat, I'm sitting here listening to you all talk about this legislative. You all are scared to put two little lines in. Now, the governor says, okay, that same-sex marriage is flawed. He also says, while he's making a stand on abortion after fifteen weeks. Okay, after fifteen weeks, what if something happens to his mother? She's got to have abortion, she's got to have the baby taken out. We had a friend whose baby died in her. And she carried it to Turner. Think about that. Your daughters, your granddaughters, I'm almost seventy-six years old. Your sisters, if you're young enough to have six or seven, can be faced with those problems. I know gay people who have been married, and they're happy. I had a problem with it at the time, but hey, I got over it. So I said, "That person's in love with that person." Do I need to say anymore? Oh, one other thing, emails. You send emails to the council, and only two people read them? I think there was an article in the newspaper about a confrontation at one of the local water holes. I think there was an article in the newspaper about a confrontation at one of the local water holes where someone sent an email and nobody responded to it. I won't call out anybody's name. But you know who it is. I wonder why you didn't answer her email. You guys, we put you up here to answer our emails. Richmond doesn't know what's going on unless you put something in that, in that legislative. We don't know that you hear us unless you answer our emails. So what good are you if you're not going to answer the emails? You get emails back from two or three council people. What about the rest of them? You're not interested. A while back, we did a webinar, Matters to the Public, because you didn't want to hear what we had to say. Believe me, two years is coming up. Think about it. Two years are coming up. I worked the polls the other day. I was glad to do it. I had fun. It was a long day. It was a long day. Who was it? Who was it? The gentleman said he worked. It was a long, but I enjoyed it because I saw democracy at work. We all had a chance to come in there and make, pick someone who we wanted to be in a job. Some of you are not going to have a job in two years. You're going to be looking for another. And if I can help it, I know you are. I'm going to make sure that I get out there and make sure that you don't get that job. Thank you. You all have a good evening.
Kessiker, does anyone have their hands raised?
No, ma'am.
All right. Anyone else from the audience? All right. With that, as the mayor of the city of Stanton, I call the November tenth, two thousand twenty-two Stanton City Council Regular Meeting adjourned.